Let me just mention these. We have a proclamation of retirement for James W. Roubert, police officer. We have a proclamation, a salute to our city and county first responders. Chris Hayde. We have three mayor's award recipients, Bill Chaplin, Brayton Hill, and Paige Seagworth. And we have a presentation, a line annual report. Nancy, I'm not seeing Nancy.
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah, I may, I'm not seeing her.
She's, she'll be here at the regular meeting. It'll be about a 10-minute presentation.
Okay. All right, we have a motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gordon Street right-of-way located west of Bomberger Street and a portion of Bomberger Street right-of-way located south of Monroe Street. Mr. Tisland?
No, no changes from the previous reading. Again, the planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the right-aways as shown here, with Gordon Street right-of-way being a dead end that only serves the applicant's property, and Bomberger being unused and unmaintained right-of-way with the lack of ability for future travelway across or through this property. And again, the applicant owns all the property to the west and south of the proposed right-of-way vacations, as well as a portion on the north side near their property at 2005 Cliff Road, Jerry and Rebecca Sherwood.
Did anybody get any emails on that? Were you guys curious to bump that to the...
Yeah, I think we should wave the third if we, or wave the second or the third.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, I would agree. I haven't heard anything on that. Do you guys have anything you want to add before we move forward?
No.
Okay, good deal. Number six, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at six, I'm sorry, 2635 Mount Pleasant Street from C2 General Commercial to R4 Multi Residential zoning district. Mr. Tisland, any, anything else?
Again, no changes going from C2 General Commercial to R4 multifamily residential, similar to the property to the south and to the east. Request by Mike Hoffman to construct the three additional apartment units, three units each within this area, and maintain a 50-foot buffer area or open space on the north side of the property. This plan was set in place in 2001 with the southern two, three plexes being constructed around that time, and the northern three have not been constructed, and he's wishing to move this project forward based on that previous plan they had. Looking at constructing them for accessibility and aging in place is what he described them.
Right on. Counsel, do you guys have any problem with bumping this one as well?
Sounds good.
Okay, good deal. Moving forward, number seven, is resolution establishing two no parking areas in the 500 block of Terrace Drive. Mr. McGregor?
Hello, Nick McGregor. Do you have the maps, Eric? If not, I have them.
Were they on your flash chart?
We had a request from Burlington Community School District for a no-parking zone in the blue. Currently, there's parking allowed. The request was from no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on school days. And then the next map shows you the current parking situation along Terrace Drive. In the red, you can see that there's no parking at any time. The green allows it, and then there's several different varieties of timeframes and whether or not it's on school days. Chris Clements, the operations manager, went to property owners adjacent to the no park, or the proposed no-parking area, and five of them were against it, two of which sent letters in for your packet. One of them was in favor, and then the other one couldn't be contacted. Superintendent Cohen will likely be here for the council meeting, but from a public work standpoint, we were kind of neutral in the discussion. I believe Chris talked with the police department and the fire department saying that there wasn't much good or bad for the no parking, so.
What's the school's purposes in requesting this?
To try and keep some kids in the building. It's too easy access to let them leave. That's some of their reasoning behind it, but I believe drug-related issues may be at hand, too, so.
I still don't understand how, I need to get some more information, I guess, but I don't understand how, how this is supposed to help their situation. It just doesn't really make sense.
I think their, part of their goal is to have controlled access to their parking lot. Is that...
They're also coupling this with some stricter parking enforcement on their own parking lot.
So with that stricter enforcement on their parking lot, they're just trying to control where students park and limit their ability to park somewhere else and having an easier route to leave campus or interact with campus. But it's, that's a school, that's a school issue. I kind of understand where they're coming from on that, but you also have received multiple, not just the two, but multiple other comments from the adjacent residents and...
Verbal comments were given to Chris that they did not agree with no parking on that side.
When I was, when I was in that building, the only kids that parked there were the ones that couldn't park in the parking lot, so I'm assuming now the parking lot is open to every kid in school?
I couldn't answer that question for you.
They, they have adequate spots for, for parking in that, in that area. You know, I, I know that, just speaking from an understanding, they, they had a significant amount of students that they were having issues with this last school year, leaving campus during the course of the day, and they're trying to figure out ways to try to address and limit the amount of that that's going on. But to give a better discussion of that, you'd need someone from the school to present that.
Unless we wait till we hear from the school.
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna have to, but I, I just, I don't know even if I have to hear them from the school of stepping on the toes. I'm just trying, I try to put myself in the shoes of the people that we're dealing with, and if it was me and I, I live there, I don't feel like a school's issue should have to, have to affect, you know, my company coming to my house or, you know, me being able to park in front of my own home. I just, well, I don't, I don't see it.
It's strange that that's the only place in, in the entire area there where there's, has been parking allowed.
Yeah, you're right.
And I know when I went to school there, parking was not allowed on that street. I wonder when they, when they changed it to allow parking. So I know most of those houses along that drive have adequate parking for vehicles, and they're off-street parking in their drives.
But my only thing is, why can't they just say, "Okay, kids, you can't park here anymore." You know, "You have to park in the parking lot and call it good." And if they have some kids parked there, then deal with it in school. Why do we have to make this a city issue?
Well, it'd be hard to determine who is a kid parking out on the street, I suppose. I mean, really.
Kids are during the school day, there's, no one's gonna be able to park out there anyway because the kids take up all the parking spots. You're right, let's hear from the school.
Right on, right on. Any other questions for Nick?
You know, I could see maybe that around the curve there to limit the parking until you come to, I'd say, 504 to 700, but I don't, I don't, like I say, we need to hear from the, from the school district.
I'm sure we'll hear from more than the school before we meet next week, so.
Yes.
But no other questions for Nick? You guys go with him? Thank you, Mr. McGregor.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, number eight, we have a resolution approving the final plat of, before we do that, I, I want to say this before I forget. Jim celebrating a birthday, 76.
Seventy-six?
That's right, old timer.
He's well-reserved, isn't he?
My dad's 79, but you know.
He salts his body with salt every night before he goes to bed. All right. Crack myself up with that. Huh?
Tim for Noah's birthday.
He's 76.
It was yesterday.
Yesterday.
But he, he tries to milk it out for a week.
So does my wife.
Oh, really?
Yeah, cool.
She's quite a bit younger than him, though. That's really no comparison.
Most people are.
Except the old codgers in the council.
All right.
I read the letter.
Yeah, she was just a kid three weeks ago. All right, before I keep laughing. Number eight, is resolution approving the final plat of board and subdivision. Mr. Tisland?
This is a three-lot subdivision located at the southeast corner of Steuben and Cliff Road. It's an existing house on one lot currently, and they're desiring to subdivide it into three equal lots, similar to what's on the west side of Cliff Road. As you note, there is a garage there that is going to be removed from that location. There will be a property line very close to that, as well as the driveway, but this would be approximately 90 by 140-foot lots, three, three of those in this location, with the existing house remaining on Lot 1, and then opening up two other lots for future construction and development.
Counsel, you guys have any issues with that?
Good use of land.
All right, sounds like we're all good. Excellent. All right, let's move to the proposed consent agenda versus a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2015 Cascade Sewer Sanitary Trunk Extension.
Ryan?
No, Councilman Davidson's been waiting for this one for a while. Okay, so this was the 2015 Cascade Sewer Sanitary Trunk Extension. It's where we installed a sanitary sewer within the existing Cascade Box sewer that runs from Madison down to Cascade Bridge. This is to process final payment to a bolt and the release of it, retention within 30 days. As-built costs were $717,960.33. The original contract was just shy of $700,000. We had a couple fairly substantial change orders, some quantity adjustments down, and there was $17,500 of liquidated damages assessed to the contractor for the delay in completion of construction. This is within the project budget. Counsel, questions?
You're satisfied? Gotta get her done.
Thank you.
It is done.
Thank you.
All right, gotta give them money. Gotta give that money. It's not done till they, till they get paid. Number two, is resolution approving purchase of replacement equipment for traffic control along Roosevelt Avenue. Mr. McGregor?
Property maintenance noticed an issue with the camera at Mason, or Market Road and Roosevelt. You've probably noticed that it's kind of out of sync right now. It's currently in constant call. The purchase would replace the camera system, and then the controller would be reprogrammed. Also, Mason Road has, is not in sync with the rest of Roosevelt Avenue. That controller is outdated, so we'd be purchasing that and replacing that, too.
I know there'll be some, some happy drivers about that, so. You guys have any questions for Mr. McGregor?
Yeah, here's my, time for me to learn something. What does constant call mean?
That's a good question. It, it always, it brings up the frequency of which it calls for a change in signals. Ryan might be able to better describe that, but...
As you speak.
The way constant call works is with the camera system in place, normally it, there are certain timings that are applied, and as a vehicle approaches, it resets those timings. With constant call, in this case, it's on Market Street, so anytime a vehicle comes up, it trips the signals over to allow Market Street to depart. Instead of holding Roosevelt open, it now gives priority towards every vehicle that approaches on Market. Where previously, when it's functioning properly, a vehicle shows up, it trips that there is a vehicle here. It continues its Roosevelt timing until appropriate, and then more vehicles will queue up on Market, and then it lets a number of vehicles through instead of just tripping for every single vehicle that comes through.
Great, I learned. Thank you.
When did that, when did that problem start? I usually find I'm sitting at Market forever.
It's probably been three weeks ago, maybe four. Part of the length at Market and people who have probably noticed, all of the side streets on Roosevelt, I think it was last fall, the DOT redid timings on Roosevelt, and they shortened the amount of time that the side streets get to give priority to Roosevelt. So, not only Market, but all of them, all the side streets approaching have had an impact.
That includes West Avenue?
Yes, West Avenue would have been impacted as well. Division, Kirkwood, Agency. I'm not sure how much of an impact happened at Agency, though.
That's all controlled by the state?
The state, basically the city requests timings from the state from time to time. The last time timings were updated was 2001, prior to this. So with the project where the state redid the bridges over Highway 34, that was a time where they were changing timings for that project, and then at the end of that, the timings got changed back to what would be appropriate for the traffic levels that were being seen.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Another job. Well done. Number three, next is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for resource enhancement and protection reprogram for the Flint River Trail along Riverfront in the city of Burlington, Iowa.
This is an application, again, for the Riverfront portion of the Flint River Trail and some improvements and amenities along the Riverfront. The Flint River Trail, I guess, is intended to connect from the Port of Burlington to the portion in Des Moines County, and this would add some amenities and improvements along the Riverfront through the use of REIT funds. Again, REIT funds, we're eligible for up to $150,000 maximum based on our population, and there is no local match required. This would probably be a standalone project based on if we get funding or not, and there's, I believe, three years to spend the funding, so it'd probably be cycled into future CIP plans.
Excellent. Counsel?
Nothing.
All right, good deal. Number four, resolution authorizing the filing of applications for the 2017 Certified Local Government CLG grant round for the development of historic design guidelines. Can handle that.
This is an application, again, for a certified local government based on having a historic preservation commission. It qualifies us for funding through the state. We've used it in the past to do historic surveys and nominations of historic districts. One thing, through our historic preservation commission, they review projects in a local district, and there's no set guidelines for that review. It's just following the National Register guidelines that are very vague, and so it's something they've wanted to have for, I guess, have something more local based on our own standards, not just some national standards. We did program this into the CIP with a $1,500 local match. Would be a rather small project, but those applications are due on August 16th, and we can use staff and historic preservation commission members as in-kind labor as well on their research and development of this. But we do have $1,500 local match and estimate around $10,000 total project possibly.
What's the size of the area that's, that's this is for?
Our local historic district is the Heritage Hill Historic District, just the blocks from approximately Washington up to Highway 34 and Fourth Street over to Central, with some of that taken out. And we do have four or five individual properties, Capitol Theater, the Preserve, or Iberia Hall, and there's a couple others. But this also could be guidance for those on that, on the National Register as they look to do improvements on their property, which essentially the entire downtown's on the National Register, but particularly it would apply to the local historic district.
And then would be act as guidance for the other areas, like the Depot and the downtown area?
Yeah, the Depot's actually on the local register as well, so that would act as guidance on that as well.
But it's mandatory then for the Heritage Hill?
These would be guidelines for when the historic preservation commission, their only approval or review authorities, the exterior appearance is visible from the right-of-way. So if someone goes to change windows or siding or a porch that's visible from the right-of-way, these guidelines would give ideas on what, what's appropriate to replace it with or design. It's not saying has to be period wood or different things. It more gives them guidance on what, what can be considered, what are the different options for the homeowners and for the historic preservation commission. Right, right now, if someone's applying, they want to do work on their home, they have no guidance to say, "This is what I want to do." I don't know, I just have to come to the historic preservation commission and see what they say. There's nothing that they can go to and say, "If I do this, I'm likely to be approved," or "If I do this, I'm not going to be approved." This'll give homeowners and building owners a little more upfront review as well, so.
I like it. Counsel?
Makes sense to me.
We're good?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, moving right along. Number five, resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the EPA for FY17 Brownfield Area-Wide Planning BTA WP Grant Program for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
This is a program through the EPA that allows for conducting activities that will enable a recipient to develop a comprehensive area-wide plan for assessing cleanup and reuse of brownfield properties. It's not the assessment grant that we did get that goes in and actually evaluates properties. It's more of a, a planning grant that would allow for evaluating, evaluating existing environmental conditions, the local market potential, need for infrastructure improvements, strategies for brownfield site cleanup and reuse. So it's, for this one, they're targeting the downtown brownfield properties, what are appropriate reuses for these, and then being able to work with property owners on what are some options for them to reuse their buildings based on some information from the community, from consultant, and looking at the conditions in the downtown area. This is eligible for up to $200,000 in funding. There's no local match for this. It was something when we did our conference call on our assessment grant, they felt this was a good idea to apply for this and appropriate, and opens you up for hopefully cleanup grants in the future as well. So trying to continue to work with the EPA as much as we can to get us in the loop and show that we're making progress, and then when it comes time to apply for cleanup grants, we have more support and documentation that we've gone through all the steps, and this is just another one along that way, so.
You guys have any questions, comments, concerns? You need to bring up?
Eric, as you do that, though, what's the status on the, that we received 200,000, or rewarded 200,000 for the cleanup, or assessment, I'm sorry. What's the status of that?
We said a follow-up call on our application, talking about what, essentially just going over the application, how they scored it, what they felt was good, and what we may need to work on. We're assigned a project manager, and we're gonna have a work plan that had to be submitted, I believe, this month. Charlie's working with Impact 7G on to kind of coordinate and develop that, so we're in that stage right now of developing the work plan and getting that into the EPA as far as what steps do we go from here. So kind of in the initial stages of that.
Is there at some point a spot where the council has to approve or accept, formally accept that grant, or?
I'll have to check with Mike Goland on that, yeah.
Okay. And before you can get an engineering firm, like for Impact 7G, I mean, they're doing some of this stuff on the, helping us get set up, but we, to have a firm that we use to do this process with us, we need to go through an RFQ process?
Yeah.
So that'll be coming to the city council yet over the next few months?
Counsel, you guys good?
Sure.
Okay, number six is set date for public hearing, August 15, 2016, for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue Roundabout, RISE-RM-0977, 643-7D-29. Anything need to be said on that?
Just setting a date for hearing, though.
Good deal. Hey, I'm gonna move number three discussion item up first so that if they have some things they need to do, they can get rolling. So discussion item number three, which is now number one, swimming pool.
My name's Carol Bartels, but pretend that I'm Vince Copeland. Vince is our president of the South Hill Neighborhood Association, and he's not available today. So we've written up a little bit about what we're proposing, and this is Dana Atkins. She's the past president of the South Hill Neighborhood Association.
Everybody knows who she is.
That's what they tell me. The South Hill Neighborhood Association started this summer with a fun, sun, fun-in-the-sund day at the Dankworth Pool Park. We had 750 children and their families at the park, and we, with other donors, provided hot dogs hamburger, hot dogs chips and bottled water. We also, South Hill Neighborhood Association, distributed 500 one-day pool passes to kids in the community, and 210 of those have already been cashed in. Those have been used by children all across Burlington, but primarily in South Hill, but they were distributed and made, as the free swim day was made open to anybody in Burlington. 65 children have received two weeks of swimming lessons free through us this summer, and all these projects have been funded through a special grant that we've been able, grant monies that we have intentionally taken that money and directed it towards swimming. We didn't have to, that was our choice, to put that money into children's swimming, and for many reasons. We have the intention to do it, but the truth is that these funds will not be available in the future, and we'd like to find a way to continue to promote the use of the city pool and all the different reasons for supporting the pool in some kind of formal or informal partnership to get the pool to keep being more used. The reason we support the pool is because it teaches children water safety. Am I talking too fast?
You're fine.
Okay, I can talk faster. We, we want to teach them water safety and water life skills. We want to have them have healthy exercise opportunities, to have positive, affordable activities in town, and to give children things to do in the summer. It's also a marketing tool for the city pool, encouraging everyone to use the pool for free at first, but to use the pool all summer long. We would like to set up a system this summer and next summer at a flat rate of $500 a day, one day every other week, all summer long. We think it'll be about six or seven days next summer, right? This summer, we're looking at just two days. We're looking at July 28th, which is this Thursday, and August 8th. But that's the three days that we have set for this summer. There won't be any more for this summer. This summer, we're really talking this summer and next. And we, we know that we could rent the pool for a private party at night for a lot less money, but we would rather invite everyone to come and use the pool and encourage the use of the pool. South Hill would work with the city to arrange the free days and collect funds for this if we could come to a price for the day that is fair and reasonable. The advantage is to the city is promoting the use and increase the use of the city pool to provide safe activities for children and reduce the impact of the summer on the police activities in town.
You want to say anything, Dana?
Dana will answer all your questions.
We're such a counterpuncher with you tonight. All righty.
Nice job.
Do you got any questions of, I don't know what you threw out there?
I thought you brought up a great point with keeping the, getting the kids active and giving them something to do. I realize that this is not going to make the city any money for that pool, but I don't think that should be the bottom line. This is just me personally. I don't think that should be the bottom line on every decision made. I support the pool. I support the kids being off the streets, and I'm not comparing it to this, but this is what I, this is what I was thinking about. I remember the, the police chief coming to us and saying, "Well, well, we got a report," and he said, "The, our calls have gone up, and a lot of the calls, the reason why they've gone up is because of the lack of the support from the mental health part of the state where they, they've dropped a lot of programs, closed MHI, that sort of thing." So, so a lot of the calls that they get now for, for, actually for the fire department and for the police department, they've gone up, and some of the reasons is because of that. Some things you just can't put a price tag on, and as for me, I support it. I, I, I go back to the days when I used to swim, and I went, I was stopping at the gas station one time to pick up some ice on my way home for my daughter, and there was two kids on bikes, and man, they were just... kids on bikes, and man, they were just, beat up skin was just as dry from, you know, I said, hey, I said, where you cats coming from? I said, you guys from summer today? They said, yes, sir. I said, you wore out, aren't you? They said, uh-huh. I said, what are you going to do? I want to go home, get a sandwich, and lay down. All righty. I said, reminds me of old times. I said, well, I used to look forward to that. That was the only time I laid down was at night and after I'd been at the pool. But I, I do. I support it, and I know that it's going to cost us some money. I know that, but I don't, I'm looking at the overall, what it does for the community, what it does for the kids, give them something to do, and I don't have a problem with it. I, I just think it's great what you guys are doing. I just want to, I just want to state that to you guys from the chair. Counsel?
What's the age area?
We actually, for the swimming, we had whole families there. That's why for us, it's real important to have it be per person, because for anyone, I don't want to just say for children, because then you don't get the parents there, then you don't have the parental supervision supporting the, the lifeguards.
Carol, tell me again how many times-
We're looking at-
Is that every other week next summer?
It would be six or seven times in the summer.
Six or seven.
Our, our hope is that this will get them to the pool, and once they've started, we might get more active use of the city pool. You know, just getting them out there helps.
In our memo from Parks, it says roughly $800 to, is that a break even or not quite?
No, that, that was just the amount, I guess, based on our current charges that we've done for other individuals, and then looking at our costs that we have over the course of year, and then knowing that we're going to have additional costs with additional staff for larger days, that was the number we felt comfortable that we could put out there as a, as a price for that. But it's not something, we're not the ones that set the fees, that's up to the council, but just something we felt comfortable.
We tried to have something that was in there that was comparable to our regular, our typical price structure. Who is it that, there's a group, another group that rents this on a, or pays for-
NAACP.
Gentlemen's-
Gentlemen's Club does 200, up to 200 for $600, so this would be, this would, I assume that you'd have this something that they could then sponsor at the, if you're going to do a different rate or a lower rate, you'd be offering them to do that instead of what they're doing. But our costs are higher on these days, and this is, at the $500, you're going to be bringing in less. We never net out anyway. We lose money on the pool, we know we're going to lose money, but these, these are the days that are our high-stress days, when we had the 750.
Wasn't it great, though?
It was, it was-
I mean, how awesome is that?
It was nice, but we don't have the staff to do it, and I think you ended up having Brad, who doesn't work at the pool, having to staff that day, because we just don't have enough staff to cover it.
It's okay.
But, I mean, it was a nice problem to have and to see the, the pool get used that much, but we'd be, we'd be in a little bit of a jam. We'd have to change how we do things at the, at the pool if we had that every other week.
Your liability is-
Now, I don't think that we're going to have that-
Same.
Because our pop, I think that having it the first day, it was a unique thing, so I don't think that you're going to see the, a free day at the pool bring in that many people in the future anyway.
Do you guys consider what you make in concessions?
That's part of our overall revenue, yeah.
So that's, you know-
When I divided it, it didn't include the price of concessions. When I, I did the math on it, it didn't address the concession income, I didn't think on the, just from your budget expenses.
What are you talking about?
Just from your city budget for the pool, does it include the income of the pool of the-
Concessions.
I guess I'm not following what, what are you, not following what you're talking-
When I went to your city budget and divided the number of days in the year that you might expect swimming-
Mm-hmm.
I can see where you came up with your number, but that didn't seem to include anything from the-
Concessions, that we could tell. So you're still getting extra money from concessions?
I mean, when, if you, you'll make money on concessions, even when we serve 400 hot dogs.
Yeah.
You guys still made hundreds of dollars on concessions that day. It's not like kids don't eat junk food just because they get a hot dog.
Yeah, they, they managed to come with three or four dollars, and they left it with you at the city for food, besides what we gave.
So an issue for me, so I mean, that's-
I'm, I'm just saying there's more money that comes in than just the rate we pay.
Is there a limit on how many people can be at the pool online?
It's based on staffing, and I don't have the exact breakdown, but there's, there's cutoffs of how many lifeguards you have to have on duty, but based on the staffing that we're able to provide, so. So there may be that we have to cut it off if we don't have the staffing available. It is a high number. Like, after the first couple hundred, it's one lifeguard per 75 or 100 people there, but we still have to have that, meet those numbers to be able to staff it.
And you would know when we're going to have it, because we would sit with you to pick the date.
Because you what?
We would sit with the city to pick the date, or sit with, meet with the pool management to say which dates is acceptable with you, that you could have the right staffing, so we could have the free day.
And in fact, we could pick a day that would probably be a slower day normally, like weekends are slower for the pool, so it's not like we'd be cutting into the revenue of the higher pool days, higher usable.
Opposite, weekends are higher, weekdays-
The week is slower. He told me they were the slower.
Oh, really?
Not that Brad said it, but I thought it might be the opposite, too.
Depends on the weather.
But, you know what, the reality is, is the kids do, you know, a lot of kids have a lot to do. There's, you know, there's baseball, softball, ASA, there's a lot of things, and they don't want them swimming, but we do.
That's right.
So, any other questions for us? A lot of our funds that we, were actually solicited by us from members of the community that really want to see the kids have something to do.
I guess there's one other question.
Besides our grant money, so.
The two days you have this fall are covered?
They can be, yeah, but-
I mean, you've raised the money for them, I'm asking-
But if you did 500, we could give them hot dogs.
Yeah.
I just want to say again, I think, I thank everybody involved for the job that they've done, for raising money for the pool, and, and I just think that we got some, some great, great volunteers in this community. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get a chance to weigh in.
Come back up here, please.
They don't need to be up there. I'm just, I'm quick.
We can look you in the eye of care or back there.
I've got a couple of concerns. One is the number of people that attend. You asked the excellent question, and I, I want to make certain that we don't put the city in jeopardy by allowing this sort of thing and having too many people there and not enough staff there, or having enough staff, but just simply not being enough people. Just yesterday, I read on AOL where there was a child swimming or laying face down in a pool surrounded by people, and nobody had any idea that he had drowned. They were able to revive him, but there was just, it was just a case of too many people there. And the other thing I want to keep in mind is, we almost closed that pool because of revenue and expense, and I, I'm not going to give away the farm and risk losing the pool to, to subsidize a, a program, and God bless you for what you do, but I'm not going to risk closing the pool forever to have five or six days where it's going to cost us more, and according to the numbers we got from management, it does cost us more than what we bring in on those particular days. And I don't, oh, we subsidize it anyway. That's, that's the bottom line that we, that I have to look at, is what it's, what it's going to cost. It's a, it's a great program, but we may have to talk numbers other than what you're comfortable with and what actually is, it's going to take to cover our expenses.
And I understand that, I just think that the council needs to look heavily at, you talk about how much you want to be a partner with the kids in our community and the parents, and you need to look big at that.
I think we also need to be, just, just to, just to be mindful and not to forget that the golf course hasn't made money for a long time, and, you know-
They're still golfing.
I'm just saying, we need to look at all of them, and everything shouldn't be the bottom line, I'm just, I'm just throwing that in.
Well, that may be true, but we don't offer free golf days on golf courses either.
No, no, we're not. We're offering a free, a free swim day there.
But that's a, that's a side issue. If we do six or seven, and we go with $500 as opposed to $800, that means 1,800 to 2,100 dollars, we have to come up with it somewhere else in the budget to cover that cost, that, and whether that's worth it or not, I guess you have, we all have to decide that. We don't have to decide that today.
No, we have to decide at some point in time, and it's 2,100, not 21 grand. Go ahead.
The question I have is, what do you actually bring in on these days, rather than what it costs you for those days? Because it's really not what it costs you for those days, but it's actually, how much are you, are you bringing in 150, 250 dollars, and we're giving you 500, or are you bringing in 800 dollars every day?
We're bringing a bunch of kids to let them swim all day. That's what we're bringing.
Well, that's what we're looking, it's both, it's a-
It's both. We're just trying to say, it's not just how much it costs to run the pool, but it's also how much you bring into that pool, and with, the more kids there, the more they're going to eat, the more they're going to spend the money there. They may not spend it on their ticket in, but they'll be spending it on their food.
Yeah, my only concern is, you know, the safety, just because-
I'm beyond that.
Oh, yeah.
That's manageable.
If they had to bring in people who aren't even there to be lifeguards, um-
Well, they can't do that, it wouldn't be, the city can't bring somebody that's not a lifeguard in, it's not-
Right. Well, yeah, but somebody who's not, you know, usually there or works there at all. Um, yeah, so I guess that would just something that we'd have to hash out at the time, I guess, based on an estimate of how many people, it's hard, though, it really is.
I was, hey, Eric, can you give us a number of how many kids that were not in the grant program that took swimming lessons?
I don't have those in-
If Salto wouldn't have stepped up to do that.
I don't have those in front of me, I'd have to-
I'd like to get that.
Yeah.
Because I think we were over half. We brought over half of those kids to the swimming lessons.
Which is a good thing.
Go ahead, too, the deal that I was out there, that you had the free, free pool. I was physically out there, looked around, walked around the pool, and it wasn't like it was jam-packed in the pool, where you, you know, kids on top of kids, it wasn't even like that. It was, you could definitely see everything that was going on, but it was a-
There was movement, you could see what was going on.
Yeah. I thought it was going on a little bit.
You know, I, I have to agree, you know, maybe we won't have 750 again, but I think that we would have a steady flow of kids getting used to the pool. And the idea is for them to see the pool and want to be there, and say, okay, I can spend 350, you know, or maybe mom and dad won't buy a pack of cigarettes and let their kids spend 350 to come swim. And so when we open up the families, they come and see the value of it, that was the whole plan, so. We'd just like to-
Again, Jim asked a question. You've already raised money, though, you say, for the two days this summer?
Mm-hmm. Well, we had, we had to add to it, but yes, we, the South Hill would have to add out of our grant money to finish up, but we have raised money for, we thought we had enough for two days, so we were thinking that would be, if it could be $500, we had enough for two days.
For three?
And then, well, it would have been three, yeah. So now we can split that up and add the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, let's back up to number one, treasurer's report. Annette?
Does, is the council wanting us to create a new cat, revenue category or expense category We have a fee schedule in place for, for the pool. Did you want us to create, were you wanting us to create a new category for a free day at the pool?
I don't.
I don't know what you mean.
For $500, is that-
Instead of the 800 that you guys had?
Yeah.
No.
I do. I didn't know we were going to-
I mean, that's, that's what the intent of that request is, and if, that would be the action item that would follow from this.
But that, would that, how many people would be able to take advantage of that? Anybody?
Yes.
That's, yeah.
You can't, you can't do it for one group, and maybe North Hill Station wants to come in, or the Gentlemen's Club, or, or you and your neighbors, you know, whatever.
Well, I mean, just because we have that doesn't mean we can, we're going to open up every day, you know? I mean, it's still a pool, it's, we can limit how many, how many days that anybody gets to utilize that.
How are you doing that?
How are you doing that?
What do you mean, how are we doing that? We can say that, you know, we're only going to have, we can only, within the budget, do six days per summer at that special price, and who's, who's the only people that are doing it? Just the Gentlemen's Club and now South Hill, right? That's the only people that ever do it.
Well, as of now, but if you, if you offer it, then who knows how many other groups might want to do it. But we don't have to make this decision.
You don't have to, but do you want it to come forward as a, do you want it to come forward as an action item?
Not right now. Why do we need to do it right now?
You don't have to now, but it, it, do you let it just die and you're not going to bring it up anymore? That's, that's what the request was. Do you want to consider the request, or is, or are you asking for it to die?
I want to consider it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'd like more discussion on it, I guess.
You know, we get an opportunity to show our commitment toward the kids in this community, and to me, I think we're, we're missing out on opportunity with this pool. It's something small, it's 2,100 bucks, or what, 3,000? It's not 300,000, and we spend a lot more money on other things. I just, I feel like this is an opportunity that, yeah, might take an extra lifeguard, okay? It's keeping kids off the streets, they're swimming.
Yeah, I got to think about it some more. Because you keep saying kids, but then they tell us families, right?
Well, I think that's even more important. I mean, if the families are involved, that's a lot more important than just the kids being dropped off, in my opinion.
Well, I'm not hearing anybody else giving me an amen, so we're not going to sit here in silence all day. Annette?
In the packet was June's preliminary treasurer's report. So, as you know, from year to year, this is going to change a lot between now and the final June numbers, because we're going to be accruing for the next six, for 60 days after June 30th, all expenses and all revenues. So I don't know how much you guys want me to talk about it, because, like I said, the big accrual receipt entry will happen after July. We'll get a lot of money, but we'll still be getting money in August that's for things that happen before year end, and same with paying bills. I mean, right now, we're in pretty good shape with this, and I don't expect it to be, I expect it to be better, but-
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I mean-
Nothing standing out to you that, uh-
No, I mean, we've made a lot of transfers in, in this period that you're looking at right now, but there are going to be a few more that happen in July that you'll see when I update the numbers for next month, so, for a few months, Annie, just so you know, you'll get two treasurer's reports. I'll keep updating June, and we'll keep going forward. So.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Annette.
You're welcome.
Nick McGregor, presentation, paint and the plows, or paint the plows, excuse me.
Eric will be throwing some pictures up on the screen here shortly. My intent with this paint the plows, well, I guess I should give you a background on what it would do. We would prime the plows with some paint, and then deliver it to the schools, and then have them paint-
Annette, could you switch over to the computer here?
Artistic drawings on the front of the snowplows. I want to try and use it as a public outreach and public education aspect. I know it's a little early to start talking about snow.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, but several of these have been done across in, with, with the Department of Transportation's, and the City of Sioux Falls is the one I saw.
I like that one.
And so my intent is to get the plows delivered to the schools and have them paint them with artistic drawings, and then during City Week, do some sort of presentation and some sort of contest associated with it. Um, and then I put this on the end, um, kinda doing at City Week, my intent is to try and have some sort of um, public safety, you know, education on, you know, these snowplows are massive pieces of equipment and, you know, it's not safe to be in certain areas. And that way they can visualize what it is and um, that way the children also have a, you know, the children. Um, the, you know, the, the youth that are painting it have it under, you know, they have a, an identification to that snowplow. Some of the details aren't worked out yet, but I just wanted to give you an update since I, I've, I've talked to the superintendent in the school and, you know, they're on board and hopefully trying to get some free paint out of the deal.
I think you said Sioux City and Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls did, yep. Yep.
I think that's cool.
Yeah.
I think that's uh.
It's a great idea.
Counsel?
Love it.
A great idea.
Minimal dollar thing, that's the nice thing.
Couple hundred bucks is what I'm expecting if I don't get all the paint donated for free.
That's gonna be pretty cool.
Good job, Nick.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
More that we can do with the school, the better.
Uh, next we have uh, Pokemon Go request. Um, is anybody here for Pokemon? I don't see anybody, huh?
Oh, no. I thought you were just talking who, who plays.
Oh, okay, well, we've got one player on the council and uh, I had some, I had some, some kids reach out to me. They wanted to get some benches and some uh, uh, trash cans put over by the hotspot down the street.
Trash cans would be nice.
And uh, I, I reached out to the churches because I, I wasn't sure how they felt with kids even playing around by their area, you know, and sitting on the steps and whatnot. And they took it up on themselves to, they're giving them stuff to drink and they set out trash cans and there's one bench already there, so. Uh, you know, I asked the kid that I spoke with, I said, well, what really do you need from the council? You know, that the churches really stepped up and, and uh, took the lead on it and I, I uh, I didn't even get a response from them. So, uh, I think uh, I think I can let this die out unless uh, something else happens.
Sounds like they've got it covered.
Yeah, they do.
I talked to Brayden about uh, trash cans specifically and we're gonna order a couple just for temporary.
Cool.
Um, to bob around, some that you could uh, they're um, sheeted metal with uh, so you could probably just tap it down into the grass and they could be temporary, wouldn't be a long term. And you know, it wouldn't blow around, but um, a couple hundred bucks would have a trash can that we could use other places. The bench, um, Jim and I talked about it, I don't know if it would uh, conflict with ADA compliance, especially on the two streets. Just cause the sidewalk's too minimal, but.
When I was a kid, we sat on the grass.
Yeah, that's my thought, but uh, um, the trash cans are definitely gonna happen, I just don't know when they'll, they'll get here, but I'll let you know when they do.
And there's a wall they sit on anyway, on the steps, so I'll take care of it.
Alright, Nick, you're on it, man. Good deal, okay, appointments? Any, any comments on that, you guys, any problems?
Sadly, Bob Gertis has resigned. Grant Bartow. Who I don't know, Grant Bartow.
I don't either. Uh, you guys satisfied then?
Yeah.
I say thanks, Grant, for showing interest. And uh, thanks, Mr. Gertis, for the time. Okay, uh, we have three future discussion items. One's the pop unit, where you, did you wanna say anything about that all tonight or?
I think he just wants to give an update uh, at the next meeting on how, what's going on and how it's progressing. It's been in existence since May?
June first.
June first, so.
So I'll take it that that's for the rest of these other ones too. Okay.
Uh, the depot, just in terms of what, what those are, depot update would be the general construction project that we have going on with some of the change orders that have been talked about and how they'll be, would be funded. We're, we've talked with the friends of the depot and those involved with the, uh, the project that the city's committed to the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and beyond that, any change orders would be all their responsibility. I think that's just kind of an update to see, just to talk about the status of where we're, we sit with that. Um, and the depot lease um, would have to do with uh, the Greer's Restaurant area and their request to, to lease the facility, they just weren't ready to present tonight.
Restaurant's gonna happen, how do you think?
There's a few steps left in that process, but this, this is one of the, one of it is to get a lease on the facility.
Alright.
Mr. Tinsel? Counsel, William Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, put it out there, there's a bunch of things going on this weekend. And actually, the Des Moines County Fair starts tomorrow to August second. Farmers Market this Thursday, five to seven. Friday Fest at the port, I mean, there's so much going on at the port from five thirty to eight. And I hear there's a band there, Eric Pettit Lyon.
Supposed to be really good.
Yeah, they are really good. Um, and then I just wanted to let you know that I am behind you with the swimming pool.
What's that now?
The swimming pool, the fees. You know? In, in a sense, the, the positives outweigh the negatives. Uh, my only concern again is safety, so I'd like to, you know, get that kinda stuff hashed out. That is all.
Right on, Counsel, what's that?
Um, I got a call from John Mercer at the hospital this weekend. They're uh, they're going to uh, light the night sky blue at the hospital. They're gonna put in uh, several uh, blue spotlights and uh, they've got about a, I think he said a hundred and forty uh, m- 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 mullards? Is that the right word for it? Those posts that stick up that uh, uh, for uh, traffic safety. They've got lights in them. Uh, he said that he doesn't think they're gonna do all of them, but they're gonna change out a bunch of those. And then they're going to have, they have a uh, uh, casual day where you can come to dress, come work casual. I don't know what's more casual than a durst, a beautiful, or nurse uniform.
Scrubs, yeah.
Uh, scrubs is what I was looking for. Um, but they, they charge a fee for that and they uh, they, they usually give that money to uh, to an organization. They're gonna uh, give it to uh, local law enforcement for, for different efforts.
There's a lot of people there that don't wear scrubs to work, so that's, that's probably why they're put placed.
So it's, it's uh, uh, they, they are, uh, said they're huge supporters of local law enforcement and they, they wanna let it, let it be known. Um, and uh, having said that, I've handed out about four hundred and fifty light bulbs, you know, so far. And uh, I've got a couple more I'm gonna take out tonight. And then on the uh, on the thirty first, uh, from two to five at the Moose Club, there's going to be an event for, for law enforcement and uh, um, they, I happen to be a member of the Moose, so they, they've asked me to come out and bring my light bulbs. I don't know what I have in mind, I gotta take light bulbs. Um, and then uh, you've got the cards and boots and.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, yeah.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I've been.
Boots and badges.
Yes, so the, the softball game, boots versus badges, again, you know, that's Au- August sixth starts at eleven. Um, fundraiser for the K nine unit, uh, it's gonna be really fun, I assume. The tickets, where, where can we?
We have tickets down at the police department.
Okay, so tickets down at the police department?
And the fire department also.
And the fire department? So I th, I encourage a lot of people to, you know, buy a ticket and come out for a little bit. I hear there's three games? Yeah, three games, so.
They're uh, they're also doing a uh, asylum auction, if anybody would like to donate anything to that. Uh, get ahold of uh, Cal Hightmider uh, out in West Burlington. If you need his contact information, uh, call me and I'll, I'll give it to you, get it for you. Um, and uh, uh, he's the one heading this thing up. A great, great young fellow. Uh, he's on the fire department out at the ordinance plant and, and also a volunteer firefighter in West Burlington. Um, and then the uh, I have had uh, several requests on a daily basis and I guess it's because of my neighborhood, that uh, something be done with uh, the corner of Eighth and Washington Street. Uh, the individual that has been asked to uh, vacate that property and uh, has, has returned. It is his property, but uh, he's uh, now uh, apparently living on the neighbor's property but has uh, has quite a bit of uh, stuff on his property. Um, they uh, I, I had a, an email from a, a lady today wondering why we're not enforcing our, our codes and ordinances. And um, she did not want her name to be released because she's a single woman, but she just, uh, she said she, you know, she feels sorry for the person. She believes in personal property rights, but she said uh, there are certain codes and they're in place for the public health and that uh, she really would like to see something done. Uh, I, it's, it's right at my back door and it's um, there are no restroom facilities up there, so I can only imagine that my uh, the hill behind my business has become a toilet. And it's offensive and um.
Ouch.
There's uh, uh, a lot of the neighbors have spoke to me on numerous occasions and they want.
We went to court with that, how did that, how was that settled?
He was ordered to vacate or otherwise he'd be fined seven hundred and fifty dollars a day and he did vacate within timeframe. We did clean up pro- property before as a nuisance and uh, something we're probably gonna have to work police on for, on someone else's property and contacted that property owner as well. Uh, majority, ninety percent of the stuff is on the neighbor's property now, it's not on his own property. So as a nuisance, it would be against that property owner, so something we're, I talked to Doug on last week and.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Scott? Uh, I just, the only one I've got is uh, we uh, they had a luncheon grill, grilled out to the Public Works Department uh, last week. Just to uh, headed by Nick, our new uh, uh, head of Publix, uh, Public Works and assistant uh, city manager. And how many other hats you wearing? We'll talk about it later, but, but anyways, uh, it was a, it was a good day to get out and uh, you know, to shake some hands with some people that helped uh, keep Burlington glued together. Uh, the great set of uh, of men and young ladies and we're, we're really, really blessed to have them. And uh, Nick, uh, I like the way you come in, man, you uh, you're just getting right after it, so really feel blessed to have you as well. Um, thanks for giving me the invite, gotta stop out there and spend some time with them and, and uh, Bob showed up, of course, in his uh, shorts to show off his legs. Uh, it was a good day, it was a good day. Uh, the next time you do that, uh, make sure you let us all know. It, it was good, it was good. Mayor Proton?
Also, I, I appreciated the uh, city employees getting together at the golf course last Thursday for the city employees golf tournament. Golf outing, I guess you can't really call it a tournament, can you? It was an outing. Uh, looked like everyone had a good time and appreciated the people that put that together. And I'm done.
Mr. Fleming?
I'm done, but I reserve the right to comment at a later date.
You always do.
Except.
Birthday boy.
Except, did you get the answer you wanted, about the, about the swimming pool thing or are you left hanging?
We're left hang, would hang in, I think that has to do with some indecisiveness and from the group, so.
Okay.
Until we hear something else, I mean, that's, we'll put it on when you're ready for it, but you'll have to let us know what you wanna see for further action.
I don't, I don't wanna leave uh, those folks hanging that have uh, made that request. I think uh, for me, you'd bring it, bring it forward.
Bring it back as a resolution next time.
No, as I understand it, for the two days this summer, they've got that covered, is that correct?
They do.
That's right.
They've got the, they've got that fee covered, the five hundred dollars is what, what they wanna pay.
They've raised fifteen hundred dollars from three separate businesses and possibly another hundred, but I think they're covering the other hundred from their grant funds. So they can, they've, they've established how they're gonna cover the cost on those first two. Now, if you were to put that fee in place, that reduced fee, their goal then, as she was explaining, was they would use uh, some of the additional money that they have to cover food costs.
Is there any way we could meet in the middle somewhere? Like not go so low as, you know, five hundred, but not go as high as the eight hundred?
It's.
Right, I'm, I'm just putting that out there as a thing too, for everyone here.
You know, one of the things that I, I think the, the, from an operational perspective, where, where that fee is doesn't matter a tremendous amount from an operational perspective. What matters from an operational perspective, the difficulty that they have, um, when you have high, high day, high number days with kids, you need more lifeguards. But then you have your other days where you only have a hundred and fifty to two hundred. You can only hire so many part-time lifeguards and having enough to meet the high stress when it's a day every other week, uh, getting that number like that is kinda difficult to ramp up and down. It's hard, it's easier at a, at a, at a, at a steady, static level. But, I mean, we, we'll do what we need to do, it's just, it's gonna make it a little bit more, it's more problematic.
Let me ask this, ju- just not to kill this thing off, would you guys be more apt to, to agree with or to go along with this if we just committed to uh, a maximum of four days per summer that we would uh, let the South Hill neighborhood?
I, I'm not gonna give one group an advantage over another. If there's another group that comes in that wants to do it for five hundred dollars also, then that's what it's gotta be. We've established a price of eight hundred dollars and that's what it needs to be unless we want to change that.
Exactly.
Change the parameters, I mean, it, we can, we can do a five hundred dollar thing if we put a limit on the number of people that, that attend. I mean, there's, I think we have a lot of, we have, we have a lot of, of options.
Yeah, we do, really.
But it's, I, I, I'm real reluctant to do the five hundred dollar thing because we will see more groups come in that, that wanna do that as well. And we can't, we can't treat any other group any differently from.
So the gentleman's club is, is the first two hundred people, people, right, and they pay six hundred dollars?
For children age uh, three to fourteen, it's three dollar admission and they just basically cover the first two hundred kids and then adults pay and after that, you pay, so they're just covering, six hundred dollars just covers the actual cost.
But we already have a price established, eight hundred dollars unlimited, correct?
We don't, no, that's just something that we could throw out as a ballpark for where we're trying to at least come up with something that's even with what we would have if we were charging our regular fees.
To the point for this, these two remaining sessions, they have agreed to go with the eight hundred dollars.
They, they have, but they'd still like you to consider.
Well, if they can't raise the last eight hundred dollars, I'll pay it. They, they're doing about eight hundred, they have the last hundred dollars in eight hundred.
Wow.
Hit me that time. No, I don't have that deep, but I'll, um.
Well, you'd have to fight me first.
I, I would uh, if they're, if, if they've established a eight hundred dollar price and if that's what they're short, is a hundred dollars, I'd uh, step up.
Do you guys have a problem with bringing it forth as, at the eight hundred dollars that staff came forward with? Do you guys have a problem with that, so we can get that?
No, that'd be great, I don't have a problem with that.
We'll, we'll bring it forward and you guys have plenty of time, you know, well, two weeks until the next time it would come up. And as you all think about it, you can make adjustments or fight back and forth between yourselves on.
We'd have to make clear whatever we come up with though, and that's your point. This isn't just for the South Hill, this is for any group.
Yeah, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying there's an issue there, I'm just saying even still, if we had it a hundred dollars, it's not like we could have every day where somebody can buy it out, it's a public swimming pool for people to use, so.
Well, and I, I think Andy's and my concern, uh, um, uh, the number of people uh, at one time in that facility needs to be researched and uh, I, you're, you're only allowed so many people in a, in certain buildings.
Right, that's what my thought was.
Limits in restaurants and that sort of thing. I, I would like to know what that, that is so that we don't put ourselves in jeopardy as a community and and at work, put a younger life in jeopardy by not having adequate co- coverage or too many people in a.
Well, it all goes back to staffing levels, cause I can say as a, as a former lifeguard, there's a certain number of people you can handle and a, and after that point, you just have to keep adding lifeguards and. And where you gonna get them?
That's a shot.
You get somebody like him and me at a swimming pool when we were younger? That takes an awful lot of attention away from the lifeguards because we were, we were millions.
Why you gotta bring me in on this? See, everybody knows, you're right, you're right. Okay, well, so we'll bring that back uh, in a couple weeks. Is there anything, can you come to the, can you come up here real quick and uh, you in the front row, yeah. Yeah, you, like, can you come up here and uh, uh, tell us what you did today for a few minutes or what you did yesterday or whatever?
On Friday.
Before we close out? Yeah, on Friday. You gotta hang with the birthday boy.
My name is Jocelyn Williams, I'm going to be a senior at VHS and I live on River Street. I remember that was important. I came in on Friday and I was wa- walking around learning a few things with uh, Mr. Frenow. And I'm interested in going into federal level politics after I graduate, so I'm planning on going up to Iowa, majoring in political science. And I'm just try- trying to figure out what it's like up here on the local level first.
Good, alright, good.
All politics are local. Don't forget that.
Yeah.
So Jocelyn got to spend a couple of hours last week, you're going to come in next week for our department head meeting?
Yes.
Sit through that and listen to how those discussions go.
I'm glad you're thinking here, this is good, somebody gave you good counsel.
Thank you.
Getting a chance to see how exciting Burlington is, we rock down here, that's how we look.
We need a candidate for president, you. You wanna step up right now?
Yeah.
Now it's time to close her down.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
I know.
Say, Andrew, you take us out.
But if she can get enough votes, she can have the office.
She might be mature and, oh, for the center.
Um, Charlie was able to re- organize getting uh, Senator Cor- Senator Courtney, Tom Courtney, here last, last week.
Loebzak.
Loebzak, dang it, Dave Loebzak. I like that I can get this right, uh, last week, Nick sat in on that uh, meeting.
Charlie Nichols.
Charlie Nichols. Um, and it was about the flood wall, really talking a little bit about what we're doing with the flood wall and just trying to talk through. And it was about the flood wall, really talking a little bit about what we're doing with the flood wall and just trying to talk through, seeing if we can make sure that we keep that at the, as a front burner issue for, for Loebzak is on a federal level as well. As there are opportunities to think about, um, rulemaking, uh, fund, fund making, uh, we'd like to see, ideally, but at least on a rulemaking basis to make sure that, uh, we have him up, uh, up to speed with what we're doing here on a local basis. And it's nice to see that his office has been willing, is willing to put the time into, uh, just being present for us and listening to what, what has to happen and, and trying to be a good partner, so. Just a shout out if I can get the right name, which I can't do.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Fleming for coming last week. It was a, it was a good time. Um, I will probably be trying to do this on like a quarterly basis down there, so I'll let you know ahead of time, so. So you can show up promptly at eleven thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Bat. Alright, if there's, if there's nothing else. Jim, did you have anything else? Okay, Mr. Fleming, what do you think we ought to do?
I think we ought to go home.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody.